...of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, a hundred and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Here.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Mayor Zalinski.
Here.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Here.
Mayor Protam Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Public safety director.
Here.
City engineer.
Thank you. Before we get into the public hearing, we have a motion, we need to do a motion to amend the agenda for the Forest Festival, we'll be adding that to the consent agenda, the motion is as follows, Manistee Chamber of Commerce has requested authorization to hold up the 84th Annual Manistee Forest Festival, an associate event scheduled June 29th to July 5th, 2020, the event request includes parade, fireworks, hospitality, tent, arts and crafts show and much more. At this time, council could take action to support and approve the request to use the city's services, parks and streets for the 84th Annual Manistee National Forest Festival from June 29th to June or July 5th, 2020, subject to department approval, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. A motion and a second, any discussion?
Mayor Zalinski, we asked when we need to make another change on our agenda today, where it says notifications regarding next work session, under item nine, number B, it says a council work session has been scheduled for Tuesday, March 14th, day of the 17th, we need to schedule it for the following, for the next coming.
It was supposed to say April, I think, it just was, it is the 14th, but it's April.
It's April, okay.
Yes.
Well, it's still showing up as well, yes.
We need a motion to change that.
Motion to amend that, yeah, I don't think you voted on the first motion.
No, but do we have to do another motion to amend that?
Well, I think that would be...
We can correct it on the next agenda. We can correct it on the next agenda.
I'm told that it'd be on the next agenda, you corrected it at that time.
Yeah, we'll have, it'll be on, I'll make sure she corrects it before the next agenda, because it will show up on there.
We don't need to do anything.
I think that's, that's fine, if it's correcting on the next agenda, the next one.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Public hearings, public hearing to discuss Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund Development Grant and redevelop, to redevelop Veterans Memorial Park. Would you like to open the public hearing, is there anyone who would like to make comments Last request, anyone who would like to make comments? Seeing none, a closed public hearing, citizens' comments on agenda-related items, is there any, anyone who would like to make any comments on agenda-related items tonight? Seeing none, we move over to the consent agenda, all items marked with an asterisk, the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters, prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during a regular portion of the meeting, consent agenda items include approval of minutes, cash balance and payroll, revenue and expenses, invoices, consideration of ordinance 20-04 tax exemption for housing, consideration ordinance 20-05 tax exemption for housing, notification regarding next work session, consideration of approval of invoices and draws requested number two, USDA World Development Wastewater Improvement Phase One, and consideration of the annual Forest Festival event, at this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented, do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second. Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Under new business, consideration of approving a three-year contract with Lake Gulls Concession and Rental to operate Fifth Avenue Beach Concession Stand, a request for, for proposal for concession stand operation was publicly, publicly advertised, Lake Gulls Concession and Rental was a lone response, was the lone response for Fifth Avenue staff, staff recommends entering into a three-year agreement, at this time, council could take action to approve a new three-year contract to Lake Gulls Concession and Rental to operate the Fifth Avenue Concession Stand in the amount of 1,100 a year for the season 2020 through 2022 and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the documents, is there a motion? Second. Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I have a question on the contract, it, it does discuss when they're, they're responsible for cleaning the restrooms, I remember at one point in time, we had a concession stand person over there who'd complain constantly about the restroom, the fact that he had to clean them up every morning because overnight, because they're public restroom, would get trashed pretty badly, so I don't know who to address this question to, but since it was a problem in the past, I'm wondering what kind of controls we have on it going
What we have done for years is the Parks Department makes a sweep through those bathrooms, both the Fifth Avenue and First Street, first thing in the morning, and so they don't do a deep cleaning, but they, they do a, a quick cleanup of anything toilet tissue that's laying on the floor, if something's plugged, and then when the operator opens up at 11, then they're responsible for the rest of the day.
Okay, so that probably happens between about eight and 11, or it happens before 11, but maybe by eight o'clock they're cleaned up?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you do monitor that to make sure they hold up their end of the deal?
We do.
Yes.
Daily.
Anybody else? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Grabowski.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of approving a three-year contract with North Country Concessions to operate the First Street Beach Concession Stand, a request for proposal for concession stand operation was publicly advertised, North Country Concessions was a lone resp, was the lone respond, responded, for First Street, staff recommends entering into a three-year agreement, at this time, council could take action to approve a new three-year contract with North Country Concessions to operate the First Street Concession Stand in the amount of $900 a year for the season 2020 to 2022 and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the agreement, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
When we bid these out, the, the bidders have the opportunity to determine what the monthly rent would be, it's one of the factors that we use in, in whether or not to award, but in my mind, those dollar amounts are so small, that the ability to operate the concessions, the ability to be there on a daily basis, to make sure that the facilities are cleaned, the amenity that they provide the public, those are really the, the top tiers that I and the Parks Commission look at, and then the dollar amount, the city obviously doesn't make any money on that, that probably just covers our cost for electricity and so forth. And if you look at it from, in a monthly basis, I think it was $50 a month difference, it wasn't very much.
What, what was it last year for the first?
Uh, First Street was the exact same amount.
Same contractor, same amount?
Yep, and he's had that for three years, we, we do have the ability in the previous contract to renew that, on a one-year renewal and then another one renewal, this particular company, when they get the three-year contract, he, he opted to go for a three-year new contract, that gives him the comfort that he can invest in more equipment and so forth, so they've done a very good job there.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of approving change to council policy, CP-19 credit card policy, the city's required to have a credit card policy per PA 266 of 1995, credit card transactions, staff has reviewed the city policy, which was last amended in June of 2007, and has made some suggest, suggested changes to update the policy, at this time, council could take action to approve changes to council policy CP-19 credit card policy, do I have a motion? I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Just real quick on this, is this, this is related to the credit card that the city uses, correct?
Correct, each department head as well as the city manager has a credit card that they can use for authorized city purchases.
And these changes, are these audit recommendations?
Um, there's a couple of things, one is just to kind of align the policy with, with our practice, for instance, we used to require people to check the credit card out every time they use it rather than being able to carry it, that can sometimes be an inconvenience, one of the changes, and this would help with the compliance, is we require department directors, the old policy said they had to initial each receipt as their approval process, we've changed it so that they can have an email that approves it, and it'll just make that a little bit easier, so we've tried to make it so we can comply, still follow the state statute and make it more practical.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Mayor Protam Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of approval of an application for the DNR Waterways Grant to adopt, and to adopt a resolution for the submittal of, of the grant application. The City of Manistee Five-Year Recreational Harbor Plan outlines certain goals and objectives, including repairing the remaining docks at the city marina, the City of Manistee is working with Spicer Group to request the DNR Waterways, to request a DNR Waterways Grant to assist in funding the project, the Waterways Grant is a res, the Waterways Grant requires a resolution by city council, I would request the city council approve the, for approval of an application to the DNR Waterways Grant and to adopt a resolution for the submittal of the grant application.
I'll make that motion.
At this time, council could take action to approve the application for the DNR Waterways Grant and to adopt a resolution.
I thought you paused.
For the submittal of the grant application.
Sorry, I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I can.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Would, would this project go through even if we didn't get the grant?
At this time, I don't believe that is in the future if this, if we don't get the grant.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Please take the roll.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a resolution of adoption to apply for Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant, the City Capital Improvement Plan includes upgrading the North River Walk within Veterans Park, the park was constructed in 1983 and has exceeded its design lifespan, improvements include replacing landscape items, walkways, stairs and retaining walls, new lighting is also included to improve safety, total estimate cost, cost eligible for, for the MDNR grant is 410,000, at this time, council could take action to approve the resolution of adoption to apply for the MDNR Trust Fund Grant, is there a motion?
Motion.
You okay?
Motion second?
Mm-hmm. Okay, um, any discussion?
I have a question, it includes replacing landscaping items, walkways, stairs and retaining walls, it doesn't include a camera for down in that area, do we have cameras down there?
We do not have any cameras in that area.
Would there be a need for cameras, I know there's been problems down?
I'll certainly let the chief speak his mind, but what we've discussed is that the overgrown shrubs and, and landscaping items that are down there create a perfect place for people to hide, you can spend a lot of time down there without being seen, so this would remove a lot of that material, in fact, one of the locations where we had a lot of congregating people, we actually removed those shrubs last year, so this would clean that up, we would also, are proposing in the project to add lighting throughout the park, I think the lighting would make it, would, would really make a nice asset, especially looking from the downtown area across the river, but it also adds a lot of safety and doesn't allow, hopefully it'll, it'll reduce the amount of mischief that occurs.
Or camping.
Camping, yes.
Are there any matching fund requirements for this grant?
There is, and that's part of the resolution, and the intent of it is not just that we're going to apply for those funds, but it requires the city council to commit to those matching funds if the grant is awarded, what we, what I put in my memo and what's in the council agenda is the worst-case scenario, however, we do have the, what's the name of that, Hillcrest Development, that if that development proceeds forward, they've pledged up to $30,000 from that development project as a neighborhood grant enhancement, and the city manager has discussed with the developer that he thought that would be a good application of those monies.
Right, yeah, he's, he's committed to that once all the financing is in place and they break ground, that he would commit to that, JCs have also given verbal approval to use some of their funds and help us out with other fundraising, and we're certainly going to apply to the community foundation for a grant.
Wasn't there some money as well in the bond for?
Yes, yes.
So, we, the J, we've been working with the JCs and the veterans for the past, a little over a year towards this goal, so they've been fundraising for the past year and intend to keep fundraising this year towards helping that match, so, and then we have the developer funds, and then we intend to apply for the, the community foundation grant, so the bond proceeds that we've discussed would cover 100% of that, it would be reduced by whatever other funds that we can, can raise.
Okay, great, thank you.
Just to answer your question about the video cameras, I would suggest that we look at after this work is all done, where is there going to be our needs for video cameras to try to project out for that to be after the completion of it, I also would comment that our calls for service really haven't, we haven't really had much on the North River Walk, we have had issues with the camping, which I believe this is going to alleviate that, so I think we should wait to see what, see what we have, I know we have some cameras that aren't being used right now that we might be able to implement down in that area, but I think we should wait till it's done so we know exactly where we can cover, that might need to be covered.
That's probably prudent, I just wanted clarification on it to make the comment.
Anything else? Please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of approving the submission of an MEDC Community Development Block Grant Application to partially fund and update of the master plan for the Ramsdale Theater. As part of the Ramsdale Theater Restoration Project in 1990, when Evans Architects created a preservation master plan for the Ramsdale Theater, this document helps guide, or helped guide subsequent multiple years restoration efforts, 30 years have passed since the report was issued and many of the key items identified have been completed, in order to finish the restoration of the Ramsdale Theater and position it for success in the future, the building needs need to be evaluated and a new master plan created, the grant application would be for 27,500, which would be matched by 27,500 from the non-profit Ramsdale Region Center for the Arts, at this time, council could take action to approve the submittal of an MEDC Community Development Block Grant Application to fund and update the master plan for the Ramsdale and authorize the city manager and/or chief financial officer to sign any needed documents, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Grabowski.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Notice, communication and announcements, tonight we have a report from the Public Safety
Either one? All right, sure, fart and sweet, a little better than the State of the Streets report that took 17 hours. All right, let's look first at our fire department statistics comparative to last year, as you can see, we have just an uptick of one call for service last year, down in our fire runs, EMS is a little bit stronger than we had last year, any questions on our fire stats? I can tell you over the, I think I've reported out already, is that over the month of December, January and into February, our call volume has been up for the last three, three and a half months, so I think it were to keep trending up. Police Department Statistics, looking at one year to the next, dispatch complaints, 8,400, that's just shy of what the county has for the entire county for the dispatch complaints, everything else is about status, status quo, since, as everybody knows, we have been down one officer, actually two with Officer Vasquez on light duty in-house, so we've been handling the same amount of calls, short of one or two officers, and handling the same, same amount of complaints, any questions on those statistics right now?
What do you attribute the accidents to, that seems to me the biggest percentage-wise increase.
Nothing significant, I, when we have a multitude of accidents, we try to look at if there's going to be a need for additional traffic enforcement in the, in the particular areas, but we haven't had anything significant in any specific areas to show that we have a speed issue, a traffic control device issue, we just haven't had anything that's really glaring.
Yeah, I just, I was just curious, like some of the staff signs, are they fully visible because of little hanging bush?
Haven't had any, any issues that's, that we've seen from analyzing.
I was just curious.
Yes.
Do you have the statistic company, Deer Strike, are part of that accident list?
Probably the last five months, we were probably taking maybe one a week for our accidents, it was pretty, it was pretty busy with that. Investigation highlights for our police department, the only real uptick you'll see is that top line, it's concerning to me because our CSC investigations are very, very involved, it takes a lot of effort, a lot of time by our detective sergeant to handle these investigations, as you'll see by our, our next slide too, we've had a lot of involvement with that, and I can't give you any explanation on that one, but criminal
Just a quick comment or question?
Yes.
I hear a lot about that we have a lot of police officers and they don't appear to be busy, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, but I think that if you stop somebody for driving under the influence of alcohol impaired, that could be an eight-hour, eight-hour project.
Used to be, I think, when I was younger, but nowadays with our dictation, hopefully we're getting them back out on the road within two, depends upon if you have to take them to the hospital, do a blood draw.
Okay, so what about CSC, how much time with something like that, I mean, you're talking hours and hours of investigation work, right?
Oh, yes, just one day would be possibly up at the Child Advocacy Center with the interview, that's a very long, involved process, then your follow-ups, getting your initial interviews, it, it takes a while, also with, when you get into victims and testing, you're talking about waiting on, on stuff to come back from the labs, doing search warrants, analyzing phones, trying to cooperate, it just takes, it takes a while, they're very, very sensitive cases, and we're sensitive to that in the police department, and Detective Sergeant Bass has been putting a very good effort in it, I would also say that Officer Goodspeed is one of the interviewers that's trained for that, she's gone through several trainings, and she's actually, does the majority of those forensic interviews.
So what?
I did a lot of those investigations, and I'll tell you, it takes time by the time you do all the witnesses, I had up to 13 discs alone on interviews, that's a long time on each disc, so it does take a long time.
I guess what I'm getting at is that the presumption that officers are not busy, if we take a look at what's required now by our court system, and what, the work that has to be done to, to get a case to court, that it takes a lot of time doing the paperwork, if you will.
Yes, I would, I would agree, let's, let's reflect on the open investigation that we have right now, reference the harassment with, at high school, that's still ongoing, it's been going on for over a week with over 20, 20 interviews having to be put down on paper, our larceny from auto case that we had this past summer, which I'll comment on, that took an enormous amount of time with the amount of evidence that we recovered to try to get it back to all the victims, so it's, a lot of these investigations do take a lot of time.
Thank you.
And just as I was, I was touching on a little bit, one thing that we've noticed that highlights in the last year, and this isn't just in the City of Manistee, but the number of Narcan deployments has increased, we actually, I just took possession of more Narcan, so we have that available for our officers, our school lunch initiative continues, we still go into the schools and assist with school lunches and serving lunches, I really like to do that, started over a year ago doing tabletop exercises at MAPS School System, where I would go in and I would have a PowerPoint of scenarios that would happen within the school, and what I would try to do is, with the teachers and administrators in the room, tax them to make decisions, you have three minutes to make a decision, you have three minutes to make a decision, and a lot of these scenarios, what I would do is I would make it that I'm not available, or law enforcement's not available, we're on a house fire, because we want them to make the decisions, what is your policy states, what is your evacuation, whatever they can lean on so they can make those decisions and feel confident if we ever have an incident at our schools, well, we did this past, a couple months ago, we actually had the school safety advisory committee come in, and I did one of those tabletop scenarios, or actually two of them with them, so there was parents there and they were involved, and they were able to interact with administration and listen to how their processes are for the decision-making, I think it was well done, and that's also expanded out to the county now, and Sheriff Kretowski utilizes the same type of tabletop with the other school systems, very well received. Our evidence locker project, an overhaul that was completed this past year, and actually it's still ongoing, I know that recently we again overhauled again to try to get rid of more of the weight that we have that's been in our evidence room, as I touched on, we had that larceny from auto arrest, it was actually two individuals that were responsible for over 100 vehicles that were broke into, that we knew of, with over 130 pieces of property recovered, and that's very time-consuming, trying to log in all that and to try to find the victims, and we were able to get a lot of that property back to victims, as I stated on the previous slide, we've had a record number of forensic interviews, I think Kirsten herself did over 30-some herself, and I think there was almost 100 total over. total over last year, forensic interviews, which is children involved criminal sexual conduct cases in the county. It's not just in the city. It's not just in Manistee County, but some of my peers, talking to them in Mason County and Benzie County, their, their numbers have gone up. We also brought in training, which was funded through the Run the Peer Foundation for law enforcement training. We brought in some officer testimony training. We had officers from everywhere, to the DNR, to the prison. We had a couple of people from the prison come in, the county, the state, and the city all attend. It was well-done training. I can tell you, as a young officer, the first time you go on the stand, you start getting grilled by a defense attorney. It's, it's pretty nerve-wracking. And this was done by a prosecutor, and it was very well-done. And he kept putting the young men and women on the hot seat and, you know, teaching them how to actually answer the questions correctly without leading the defense attorney down the garden path. And we still hold law advisory meetings monthly, something that was started here after I got to Manistee, having everybody from all walks of life. The last meeting we had two Fridays ago, we're now having them at the county building right before the county public safety meeting. I think we had thirty people there. It was very well-attended. Everybody from parole, probation for all law enforcement agencies. I invite the magistrate, the prosecutor, everybody's there, the prison, everybody's there, central wellness, everybody represents, and we all, we all talk and share. So that's been very well-received in the county. Coast Guard collaboration. Last year, every month, we do a training with the fire department. It's called our All Hands Training. Well, if there's a medical event that's out on Lake Michigan, we're going to be called, we're going to be toned, and we're to meet up with the Coast Guard and go out to assist as we are ALS. So I put together a scenario where we had an individual on a boat, have a heart attack, but then the boat suddenly couldn't move, and we wound up having, it was really a neat sight to see. And guys got out there, and we got, I think, from the time of dispatch, which they actually left the fire station, to get on the boat and get the person back into the rig with seventeen minutes. That's very impressive. It was great working with the Coast Guard on that. Seventeen minutes. Exercitation training. We wound up getting through an AFG grant, a full set of extrication tools. So Jeff McCool allowed us to have some vehicle there so we could do the training inside, and we brought in the vendor, and he showed us everything manageable, imaginable that we could utilize. Right there is a picture utilizing what we call is a RAM set that you can see that is pushing the roof of the car away.
Isn't that Jeff's car?
Yeah, that's. They cleaned it.
We cleaned it up, though. Another picture of extrication training. The tools are invaluable. As you can see, they're battery-operated tools, and the batteries on those are excellent. We utilized those, I think, now three times on actual events, helping out other jurisdictions. So invaluable tool that we did not have. Annual hose testing. Every year, we complete hose testing. This is a pretty exhausting experience. Deputy Chief Cameron is the one who heads it up. As you see there in that picture, in the far end by the basketball hoop, that's what pressurizes all the hose, and then we have to watch them for, I think it's five minutes at a certain PSI to see if there's any failures. Last year, not this fiscal year, but the year before, we wound up failing five of our five-inch sections of hose, which is not cheap to replace, but luckily you find them then before you get to a fire scene. We also do an all-hands training, which everybody on the department comes to do our five-inch. We go out up north of EPW, and we lay out all our five-inch, one vehicle at a time, and we pressure test them. So we do that every year. There's just a picture of collaborative effort between Manistee County, Filer, Manistee Township, Filer Township, and the city at the Davis Street Fire. Backside picture of that house. And if there is any questions, yes, we've already started the process of making the contact on the light situation so we can start working with George, as I know George is very excited about working on these houses and getting them in as lights so we can tear them down. All right, George? Go team. Over at Manistee Township, they have a structure that they put together for fire training. This is money that's been pooled together by all the departments, and they've been slowly putting this together. We went over there, and we did some ventilation training. They actually have a small portion up on the second level where you can work on cutting into a roof of a house. We just bought the plywood, re-put it back on there one by one, and every officer was able to sit there and work on ventilation and the tools necessary is there. If you cut the hole, you have to poke through into the room below you. Another picture of collaborative effort amongst the departments. Anybody take a gander with this, what we're doing here? Jeff, you can't answer. This is collaborative effort. Everybody comes together, assists us both at MCC and at MAPS during the big bonfire events. So this is just a group of firefighters from the three jurisdictions just sitting together waiting, you know, for them to lay the big pallets on fire, just in case it gets out of hand. We're, we're there for that. So it's good. We have a great working relationship, as noted during one of the previous meetings, how we're going for the AFG grant together. And one thing that, when I first got here and we're doing the Sleigh Bell, I invited the sheriff and the Public Safety Director over at the tribe, and I actually invited the commander of the Coast Guard to walk with me in the front of the Sleigh Bell Parade. I think that's, it's nice. They always, they seem to like to do it, seem to, when it's not too cold. But I think that's nice to be able to get everybody together and just show everybody in the county there for, for the Sleigh Bell. So that's all I have for you for a public safety report up. Any questions of me?
Thank you, Chief.
Yes.
Turns to comments, citizens' comments. It's an opportunity for citizens' comments on municipal services activities or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comment, limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Anyone like to make comments tonight? Seeing now, women, officials, and staff, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, I just wanted to remind council of all the things that staff has done to try to prevent unnecessary exposures on city properties. First of all, this morning, we closed all of our city facilities to the public to include the City Hall, Fire Department, DPW, wastewater treatment plant, and Marina. And it's gonna, it's effective this morning, and will continue until further notice. We've also canceled the Parks Commission meeting scheduled for March 19th, the Historic Commission scheduled for April 1st, Planning Commission scheduled for April 2nd, the Tree Commission scheduled for April 6th, and also the PEG Commission meeting scheduled for April 6th. And then, as you can see, tonight is the first time we've instituted social distancing for the audience and council as well. So that's something that we'll be probably moving forward with. And also, we canceled our Neighborhood Information Meeting that was set for tomorrow to discuss the road projects. In lieu of that, the Spicer went around and delivered informational packets to those affected neighbors. We've also canceled all employee training and travel through April 6th unless that training is deemed essential by the appropriate department director. We've eliminated attendance at non-city meetings, unless the attendance, again, is deemed essential. Department directors and other employees are not required to attend city council meetings or work sessions unless they have an item on the agenda. Our department director staff meetings are canceled until further notice. In lieu of that meeting, we just start an email string, and I usually start it off, these are the things that I wanted to discuss, and then it just goes through everybody and adds it, and then we have a document with topical information. We're also continually remind the employees to disinfect common areas such as the payment counter, the time clock at DPW. Encourage the employees to practice universal precautions and provide information to them on universal precautions. We've discontinued water shut-offs until further notice, the rationale being that that removes probably one of the best ways to safeguard yourself from transmission of any, any disease or virus, and that's by washing your hands. So we discontinued that. We had a few that were shut off. We went back out and shut them back on. There's information on our website, on prevention steps. We've posted all of our precautions that we've taken on our website and Facebook page. We're continually encouraging the employees to stay home if they're ill. If, if an employee or member of their household is ordered to quarantine by an appropriate authority, we're not going to require the employee to use sick time. So we won't, we think that that's beyond their control. And also, Chief Kozel has worked with Central Dispatch to not dispatch officers to calls unless it's something that's immediately in progress or a life safety issue. And apparently, that's being done throughout the other law enforcement agencies in the county. I will just remind council that this is certainly a very fluid situation, and we're going to continue to react or try to get ahead of this based on advice we get from a variety of sources. So I think it's our, what we're doing now is our new normal for the foreseeable future, and we're just going to have to reevaluate on a, on a daily basis. But, you know, we've put a lot of time into this, and I think it's time well-spent for our employees and the community. And we really have not had any pushback about the public not being able to access the buildings. We put notices on the doors of all the facilities, letting them know that they're closed, give them instructions on numbers to call if they have business conduct, how to make payments, either using our outside payment slot or going online and making payments. So there's a lot, we can still conduct business, it's just a little bit different, and we certainly ask for the community's understanding in this, during this situation. So that's what we're doing. And again, we'll probably institute additional precaution based on new information that will be coming our way. One thing I heard it talked about a little bit early, at the start of the meeting, but just want to remind council and the community that, you know, we've, there's a lot of small businesses that were ordered closed, the restaurants and bars, and they, they still provide takeout, or they'll make deliveries, or things like that. So don't forget that you can still support those small businesses by ordering a meal, going to pick it up. We had, today, we were in budget hearings from 10 until 2:30, 3 o'clock, and the Department Directors decided we were going to eat in, and we ordered from a local restaurant, and it was delivered here in record time. So just want to remind, there's a way to, way for council, council and the community to support those small businesses that are closed. So that's all I wanted to add.
Are we looking at having to lay off anybody? Or are we looking at...
No, we're not looking, there's plenty of work to do.
Okay.
Yeah. And probably, at least in City Hall, we'll get more work done because we won't have so many people coming in, and we can concentrate and focus a little bit better. But yeah, there's plenty, there's plenty of work to do. DPW's still got their slate of tasks they've gotten done. Community still knows how to call our fire and police department, and they're responding. So yeah, we're going to keep them busy.
What about, I know that parents are having issues with school being off now.
Mm-hmm.
Are we, for like childcare issues, are you having, any employees having issues with that? And are we accommodating?
Have you had any, Tim? I'm not aware of any, none.
Fine.
We've actually reached out to everybody that has children just to see what, what's going on, try to modify schedules to try to accommodate and move people around just in case there is that need. So everybody has been touched that might have that issue.
So we are accommodating, though?
We're trying our best right now, but it's more of just trading shifts so that, you know, we can allow them to have that flexibility.
And also, we, our current policy allows that, that if you can use your sick time to take care of an, of an ill family member, too. So that's something that's available to our employees.
Mr. Taylor, one of the things I think about, and the reason I appreciate you closing City Hall, is that what would be the consequences to one of our member, one of our employees downstairs getting coronavirus? What would be, what could be the potential consequences?
Well, I guess probably the worst case is that we'd have to, have to quarantine in place. I mean, that corn, that's the worst case, but depending on when it was discovered, that employee might have to stay away from work for 14 days. Certainly, the employees that they were in contact with would have to get tested, and who knows what that could lead to. So it's, there's a lot of ramifications. Anybody? That's all I have.
City clerk?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Taylor?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Who am I missing? No, um, Mr. Bradford?
Nothing, Your Honor.
DPW?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Engineer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Okay.
Just like to piggyback on what City Manager was talking about, it's, it's a little bit different, you know, with the public safety, especially our fire department, because our ALS responders, our paramedics have to respond to these calls, to any call right now. So you might see them in their full white suits with a mask and a big face shield on. We've actually had to do that three, four times already. We've had a good working relationship now with the dispatch center. I will tell you that if there's any type of medical call, that a person calls in for medical, I've fallen, they're going to ask the questions. Do you have a fever? And do you have lower respiratory distress? Because a lot of times, people already have that going on, but they're going to talk about something else. So that helps our, our men and women when we respond. We also are limiting our, our police department. Our police department always likes to help on the medical calls, only if necessary are they going to go in on medical calls. So if you get complaints that our police are not helping out, it's just trying to limit exposure.
And that's where I'm going with that, that it does have the potential, it could actually shut down a department if, if you get into certain situations. That's why I'm glad that we did close City Hall, and we're doing, taking all the steps to protect our employees. We need them now, more than ever, so.
We've, we've done under City Manager's direction, we've actually scope, put out, calendared out for the next month if we had two people go down over the fire department, how are we going to manage? How, how am I going to manage downstairs if I have a couple of people go out? So we're trying to project out worst-case scenarios.
And we, we have the same, I've asked the same thing of DPW, and Jeff's provided, you know, scenarios of, you know, where, if we have people out at the wastewater treatment plant, what are our options? And he's got, he's got, to use a sports analogy, he's got a bench. Same thing with the water department. Same thing if, you know, we have water main breaks and, and we can't do it for some reason, there's contractors in the area. So, so we have these contingencies and these backfill plans in the event that are needed.
Well, I can't, I'm sorry.
No, I was just wondering if we had personal protection equipment for people at DPW. So you make house calls as well for water or sewage issues. Are they prepared as well?
Yeah, Chief and I have been talking since this outbreak happened about what type of personal protection, what type of protocols. We're asking the same questions that you mentioned that the Central Dispatch is asking when they make calls. So we're trying to limit that face-to-face contact as much as possible.
Thank you.
Because, go ahead.
Sorry. I just had a couple of questions. So with these new protocols that the governor placed about, you know, gathering, not more than 250, are we enforcing that? And how are we doing that? And like, having the restaurants closed, all that stuff?
Right now, we're getting compliance. I think we had a little situation last night that we were addressing, but we're getting compliance. I've sent out what the actual violation of that, actual governor's proclamation, there is an actual, it's an actual misdemeanor to violate it. So we know what to do if it happens to get to that point, but right now, it's just going to be education, I think, if there are, but we have seen compliance.
Okay. I just wondered if there was, like, steps on how to do that.
Yep. It's first, to me, it's going to be education. I'd rather not have to, and then hopefully get compliance. If not, there is, it's a, it's a 90-day misdemeanor.
And then, if you get, is there protocols if someone gets pulled over? Are they still, like, having to take driver's license? Like, how is that?
Throughout the county, when we met, we decided, well, instead of taking stuff from people that you pull over, if you happen to have an accident, let's try copying it down on your pad. Just try to limit anything that would have any type of exposure. We're not going up with masks on.
Okay.
It's just, that's unattainable, really, to do that.
But plastic gloves and things like that, or?
They have them. They're wearing them as much as they can. We have the disinfectant in each car so they can put it, they can use it with their hands. So we're very close. I know that the stockpile that the government has had, that they've talked about, they've, they're releasing some of that, and we put in for requisition for more masks and more Tyvek suits so we could have it, because it just, if this is going to continue, especially for our ALS providers, we're going to have to make... for our ALS providers, we're going to have to make sure we have enough.
How are we set right now?
We're okay.
Because the situation is so fluid, and things change sometimes hourly on what needs to be done, I don't want to speak for council, but I'm going to, I'm going to say that, Mr. Taylor, I think council will support whatever you feel, and if there's any objection to that, I'd like to hear about it right now. Anything you feel needs to be done to protect the health and safety and welfare of our citizens, do it.
All right, thank you, and then, you know, whatever steps I take, as I've done in the past, council will be notified of that as soon as, as soon as possible, so we're going to, we've got a good group of department directors here and employees that we can get together and talk and brainstorm about what we should be doing, and that's how all of this has come about, is just getting together and using our collective wisdom and coming up with a path forward.
Well, I know, I know personally, you've been very proactive. I believe we're kind of, we are kind of ahead of the curve.
I'd like to think so.
And that we'll continue to be ahead of the curve. Fania, do you have anything to say tonight?
Well, I'd like to wish everybody a happy St. Patrick's Day. It's kind of a bummer that we're going through this, but I wish that we could reschedule it, but.
Great, send her house.
Again, I'd just like to comment on how well I thought our community did following the rules. I saw a dramatic impact. I think, like I said, almost all of the bars and restaurants followed the rules almost immediately, and again, good on them, nobody tried to stretch it out or complain, and I thought most of our citizens did a great job as well, just trying to follow up with being courteous and supportive, so good on us, and again, happy St. Patrick's Day.
Mr.?
Did you forget?
Do I have nothing? Mr. Cooper?
I'm leaving.
Nothing.
I have nothing? I'll take a motion to adjourn?
Motion?
For adjourn.